Good evening. It's Monday, October 1st, 2018, approximately 7:00 PM. We'll go ahead and call the Macocota City Council meeting in order and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the middle with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Go ahead and proceed with roll.
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Barker?
Yes.
All right, next up is the consent agenda, which consists of the agenda, minutes of the September 17th regular meeting and the September 17th special meeting, bills, one amendment on this is there's a bill in there from Thompson Truck and Trailer Incorporated. The bill is listed as 219653. It should be changed to 196357. The monthly financials, an event application filed by Macocota High School for the homecoming parade, and renewable Class C liquor license, Sunday sales and outdoor sales filed by Prozaculis.
It's moved.
Second.
Item B, motion has amended, correct?
Correct.
Got a motion by Lyon, second by Keane to approve the consent agenda has amended. Any other discussion? Go ahead and take roll.
Baker?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Barker?
Yes.
Keane?
Yes.
Next up is the audience portion. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to come up and address the council tonight that's not on the agenda? Jeff, if you'd like to, real quick?
I just wanted to take a moment to introduce a new company president, Tim Garrity is here.
Welcome, Tim.
Do you want to come up and say anything?
Just thanks for your continued partnership with Alliance. Appreciate the work and for the work we've been doing for a long time.
Thank you.
That's all I've got.
Okay. Yep. Introduce yourself and tell us what you got to say.
Well, okay, my name is Dan Holm. I've submitted paperwork to volunteer to fill in the vacancy created by resignation of council member Craig Horace. He's my backdoor neighbor. And I just wanted to say hello and introduce myself to you all. And so you have a face to put with the name. You get the paperwork, okay?
Okay.
That's about it. And if you decide to choose me, I'll just do everything I can to help in any way I can. Okay?
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Me too, Joe.
Anybody else that'd like to address the council tonight that's not on the agenda? We do have a couple people. We have Laura Burgett from the YWCA.
Hello, hello.
Hi. Good evening to you guys. I just wanted to make a brief appearance and I will make it really brief. I work with the YWCA and many of you are familiar with Pam Eggers, who was the director at the YWCA. When she retired, I was hired to fill her big shoes. So what I'm just coming for is we just recently received funds for this current fiscal year and I just came to say thank you very much. It goes a long way in helping those in the Macocota area or community. I wanted to tell you that we helped from this beginning calendar year, which I know is not your fiscal year, but from the beginning of the calendar year, we've helped 43 adults and 57 children in Macocota alone. And that's with rental assistance, utility deposits, utility notes or back pays or rears, as well as many other things that we can do, gas vouchers, referrals to other agencies. We work really closely with Operation New View and ASAC and Hillcrest, to name a few. So again, I just wanted to tell you that we truly, truly appreciate all the support that you give because it does go a long way in helping the people in this community. And it is a bigger problem than a lot of people realize and that many people are just a car breakdown away from not being able to pay their rent. Or somebody's in the hospital, they lose a week's worth of work because their child is in the hospital and they end up getting laid off or fired because they don't have sick time or whatever available. And then they can't pay their rent and it's just a spiral. So it's a huge issue. Many of you have probably seen, I'll just show it out here, and there's some on the back table. It's the homeless flyer. There's a homeless hotline number to call. Now, it is not for emergency shelters. It is to get them on a priority list, which goes directly to me. We're the access point for Jackson and Clinton County. There's also an access point in Dubuque and Delaware for our region. So what we do is we get those people calling in and we get their names on that list and get them started. We do try to divert them to shelters or to friends or families until we can get them housed. But it is this number and it's very important if you can get the word out. There's extra back there. Just hang them in the police station, wherever I try to get around and put them out and about. So if you have any questions, my numbers are back there. I left some cards back there, some other brochures that just talk about what rapid rehousing is and what we do. We've helped out with backpacks and food and gifts at Christmas time. So again, we truly appreciate all that you guys do for us and that we hope that we can continue to partner with helping those in the community. Does anybody have any questions?
Question?
No.
Thank you very much.
I know that was fast, but I know you guys are busy.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
And Wendy McCarty, come on up.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I will try to be as brief as possible, but today marks my second month in the role of your chamber director and I just wanted to give you a very brief update as to what we have been doing. My main focus this past couple of months has been getting out of my office and meeting as many business people as I can. Through that, I've learned some valuable feedback, which is really going to help me as I move forward in with Chamber and find a direction for Chamber to go from here. One thing that is new for Chamber is that we now have a new membership structure. We used to structure our membership based on how many employees your business had. We've now changed that to a tier membership structure, which actually offers a lot more value for our members and a lot more choices in their membership. We've had a very positive response to that, just with people that I've been out talking to already. In the last three weeks, we've signed on new, we've welcomed six new members to our Chamber and we've also upgraded three current members to a higher tier. In addition, new members will have feature stories in the Sentinel Press in our newsletter each month that goes out. It's a really nice personal article where they can tell the story of their business of themselves and really gives that personal aspect to their business. In terms of marketing, we've distributed nearly 1,300 copies of this card, which you've probably seen around in the rat cards. Those have gone out all over our local area, also to Dubuque, to Cedar Rapids, Anamosa, Bellevue, Monticello, and we are having more printed off very soon so we can continue to distribute those in other areas. The recent marketing campaigns that were finished just within the last year that Matt had started, those have definitely paid off. They've had a very positive result. I'll share a little bit of the Google analytics that I have. Just in the last 90 days, traffic to our Chamber website has increased by nearly 20%. And 81.7% of those visitors are brand new visitors to our Chamber website, which I think is very encouraging. 3.3% are coming direct from the added domain names that we've added, the ExploreMac.com, MagEvents.com. So that has been very successful. That's the marketing that went out on the billboards, all of our walk-around cards, also through print and digital ads in a 45-mile radius. 59% are finding us through Google search. So they're actually searching for Macocota or searching for Macocota Chamber. I find that also very positive. And most interesting, I think, is the demographic that's coming to our site. 33.5% are between the ages of 25 and 34, 27.5% between the ages of 18 and 24, and 15.5% between the ages of 35 and 44. So we are gaining a much younger following, which I think is very encouraging and really showing us that we are broadening that awareness of our Macocota area. Also, the majority of those visitors state that their interests are in sports, individual sports, running, walking. So I really feel that the Parks to People and the initiatives that have gone along with that have been very positive for that as well. Okay. For future marketing, I'm pursuing looking into the billboards again. I'm also looking at digital marketing in local television and regional television, also digital marketing in newspapers and websites, specifically Travel Iowa. As for events coming up, we will be having It's a Wonderful Life in Macocota coming up that November 24th and 25th, which is Thanksgiving weekend. It's in correlation with our Small Business Saturday. As of right now, I have 23 businesses signed on to take part in that event. So that's very exciting. It's more than we've ever had in the past. Later this week, I will be attending the ICCE conference in Centerville, Iowa, where I will get to spend three days with directors from all over the state of Iowa. So I look forward to picking up a lot of information there. They'll be very helpful as I move forward. So, any questions?
Don't forget about the dedication coming up on the 20th.
Yes, Matoberfest. Yes, dedication of the sculpture will be that day. And that's actually through Hometown Pride that we're putting on Matoberfest and bringing in vendors from the local area, Jackson County. If you make it, bake it, or make it, bake it. There's another thing that goes along with it.
Grow it.
Grow it! Make it, break it, grow it. Thanks, Erica. Yes, they're welcome to take part. So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you and thank you for your support and your partnership. Wendy.
All right. Moving on to the next session. We have no old business. We'll move on to new business. Item A, discussion and possible motion regarding waiver for construction of a sidewalk to nowhere filed by the property at 402 West Grove. And that's right next to the ball fields down there. And there is no sidewalks. Well, I don't know if they come within the 400-foot parameter, but the houses can join it next to them. They do not have sidewalks. Any thoughts, ideas or discussion? Motion?
What exactly do they want to do with it? They want to have a sidewalk?
No, they don't want it to be required because they build a new house there. They don't want it to be, yeah, the ordinance states that when you build a new house, you have to do a sidewalk.
Inspection.
And they're asking for a waiver to not have to do that.
And the nearest sidewalk has to be less than 500 feet away?
It's either like four or 500 feet away.
It would be there too. We've been doing two years.
Like two years. Well, that's for the snow removal.
Then you would do something along lines where somewhere to connect that and you would want it.
Our ordinance actually does call for if a property within that area can, or builds a sidewalk, then this becomes void and they would have to build a sidewalk.
Good.
So we have permission. Oh, moved.
Second.
A motion by Colister, second by Keane to approve the request for waiver of the construction of the sidewalk to nowhere filed by 402 West Grove. Any other discussion? Go ahead and take roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Barker?
Yes.
Keane?
Yes.
Baker?
Item B, discussion and possible motion regarding city hall tuck pointing repairs.
Frank? Yes.
You awake?
I was thinking, Mr. Mayor.
Oh.
My apologies for the delay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, about two months ago, MMU approached us, said they had some water damage on their side of their, of their west building wall. After like investigating with the Public Works Department, outside contractors, we did find the problem. We like requested and received quotes to take care of the, like, like immediate MMU problem along with getting quotes for long-term repairs. Like repairs that are needed are tuck pointing and gutter and downspout repairs. We have to do both of these jobs together because they have to, they have to remove the downspouts in order to do the tuck pointing. Part of the issue is, is that the architect came up with a really neat plan to try and hide the gutters and try and hide the downspouts. That's sort of part of the problem. The gutters have a hole in the bottom of the gutter where the downspouts are, where the downspouts are connected to. That hole isn't large enough to, to get rid of the water in a timely fashion. So the fix to that is, is that we're, is that the new downspouts are going to be cut into the side of the gutters. So the water has a, has a freer flowing route to get out of the gutters. Tuck pointing, if you look at the pictures in your packet, we have a lot of water issues that were created by the downspouts leaking. We have to do a lot of tuck pointing, sandblasting, sealing. On all the lintels over all the windows surrounding the building, you can see the water damage that has already appeared. The like tuck pointing is going to run basically at $25,000. To repair the gutters and put new downspouts and to fix all the leaks is basically $7,000. To put new gutters, downspouts and the whole shooting match will be $17,000. The only thing I might add, from my own opinion, is that the longer we wait, the worse it's going to get.
This calls for $25,000 essentially.
Um.
I don't see the other numbers.
Um.
No.
20, $25,000, just for the tuck pointing and another.
975, but we don't see the, the other numbers. You need a better option?
Right.
That's the first page. Wait a minute. Complete, big, it was on the first page. 16, 9.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all on the first page. Yes.
Frank, do you have a recommendation on fix or replace?
Well, the, well, the like tuck pointing has to be done because we're starting to get water behind the face brick. The like gutter option, I don't know, like fixing all the gutters, if that's a good option or not, but that'll be about $10,000 cheaper than just fixing the gutters and installing new downspouts.
That may be using half a bolt. The gutter and the tuck pointer?
MMU pays 50% of whatever, whatever cost you guys, you guys decide to go with.
How much is in the building fund? Anything left there?
Our CIP has $16,300 and then, um.
So this is just general fund?
General fund has $2,000.
This has been brought up in the past with previous management, but since there was never, you know, any money, it always got, you know, pushed off to the side.
Well, I don't know what it needs between the gutter option or the gutter and downspout option. I mean.
Talking to Midwest Architectural Sheet Metal, obviously he recommended the new gutter option for our $16,000, but he said he will be able to do some sort of special welding ceiling to repair the gutters and put the new downspouts with the new holes so the water can get out faster.
Will the new gutter option take care of this gutter out here too?
Uh huh.
Next on our list is going to be, there's a drainage issue out here that's really bad that you can go out after a rain and it's pools of water and five minutes later it has sunk into the ground somewhere. So fixing the downspout out here is just a start, but something probably really should be done with the downspouts.
I was going to come back later. All the sidewalk on the parking lot side, and the sidewalk directly behind you on the round curb, all, all that concrete slopes back into the building. So every time it rains out, there's water that's flowing down along the footings in the basement.
That's wonderful engineering.
Okay. Thoughts, discussion or motion?
I neglected this building, Lauren, though.
Well, first, right now, we're talking about just doing the tuck pointing repairs in the code for that's $24,975. So.
Second.
A motion by Colister, second by Lyon to approve the tuck pointing repairs to the cost of $24,975 from Allen Jackson Tuck Pointing Incorporated.
With MMU paying that? There's three, if it breaks out, three ways, I think.
With MMU.
Yeah, proportional share.
Proportional share. Any other discussion? Go ahead and take roll.
Colister?
Yes.
Barker?
Yes.
Keane?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Item C, discussion and possible motion regarding city hall gutter repairs. And that's what he just talked about. Option one is just doing the gutters for $6,890 for the gutters and downspouts. Option two for $16,960.
Motion for option two, same with MMU and others, put MMU in their share.
Got a motion by Colister, second by Barker to approve option two gutter repair for $16,960 from Midwest Architectural Sheet Metal with each applicable party paying their proportional share. Any other discussion?
This would essentially, even after cutting it in half with MMU, go over our CIP. I mean, $25,000 and $17,000 is 42,000. We cover roughly half, little under, that's 20,000. We only have 16,000 in the CIP. So that leaves 4,000 left over. If the general fund has 2,000, we're still 2,000 short.
The general fund for?
The reserves.
We'll have to look and see if we can just come up with $2,000 in our line item. I mean, it's work that's got to be done, so it.
It's not the general fund has $2,000 in. It is.
Administration has.
Administration.
Line item.
Part of the budget.
This is the administration general fund.
Right.
Okay, I was about to open a new conversation after that.
So I want that to be.
It says general.
Way more clear to everybody here. The general fund has more than $2,000 in.
Fantastic.
Now that we're all on the same page. That is just the administration's portion. So that would technically, if we use that extra 2,000, we'd roughly have to come up between two and three.
Well, and the CIP pays 45.25%.
I don't know what the breakdowns are between the entities that are.
But it says here that we would be paying 45.25%.
Thanks. You got the math on that right now? I don't know what those numbers.
Roughly 20,000.
Thanks. We'll figure it out. Any other discussion?
No, sir.
Go ahead and take roll.
Coolman?
Yes.
Barker?
Yes.
Keane?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Awesome. Item D, discussion and possible motion regarding horseshoe pond tent site camping.
Um. I guess for our TV audience, I'll just read my little request for council action. During the past summer, most of our camping problems have came from tent campers. We had complaints ranging from doubling up on campsites to avoid the $7 camping fee, garbage and junk all over during their camping stay, and leaving garbage and junk after they leave, not leaving after the 14-day time period, campsite to campsite fighting, he said, she said arguments, loud noise, no respect for the host, not paying on time, saying they forgot, was too late, they were tired, et cetera. I could go on and on. I must add one more thing in having to clean up human waste. I just forgot to put that in here. The amount of time spent on these problems by Public Works, the city hall staff, the Macocota Police Department and camp hosts far outweigh any profit from the $7 fee. In, in 2009, we proposed to close the tent sites up on the hill. If you still want a tent camp, you can pay the $17 in camp on a regular campsite. This will also give the host greater visibility to monitor each campsite versus the camps, versus the tent campsites that were up on the hill. I am bringing this to you now so a decision can be made now versus later, so everything is set up for next year's camping season.
What would we have to do if we decided to close that upper level?
We would just take all the signs down and we would change some signing in the rules and the host next year would do everything else.
So picnic table, would you leave, I don't know, like the picnic tables, firesites and all that, would they come out or?
Picnic tables up there for people to picnic, but.
Okay. Any thoughts? Got your motion?
I actually heard some complaints come, come through Macocota River Rental about people camping down there and just how it was loud past 10 o'clock from tent campsites. So I, I'm okay with this. So moved.
Second.
So how is this going to alleviate the issues instead of just moving the issues from the tent sites to the camping sites?
One of the things is going to be the extra $10 I got to come up with. And the other big thing is the host will be able to monitor just by looking at his camper.
The most campground allows tents?
Yeah. They, we've talked to county and they, they do a lot of tent camping, but on regular sites, just like we're going to do here. The actual sites have a lot more lighting around them, don't they? Than up on the hill doesn't have hardly any lighting at all.
Right.
That's right.
I forgot what campground it was the county had, but Gerald said they took off the, like a camp, they took off the tent sites and the problems went away.
I think.
And we have a motion by Coolman, second by Keane to approve the removing of the, oh, I'll call it the upper tent camping site. Any other discussion? Go ahead and take roll.
Barker?
Yes.
Keane?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Thanks, Frank. Thank you. Item B, ordinance amending chapter five fire protection of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Macocota, Iowa. And this is the first reading. And this, Gerald, you want?
Yeah, I'll have Matt come up to give a brief overview. You may recall Matt presented to you, oh, back in, was it January, February of this, past of this year, to talk about the, bringing in the, the fire protection or the, what is it, the squad?
Rescue.
The rescue, West Coast Service Squad into the, the city. We look at the language, we worked with our attorney. Our attorney reviewed the language with the fire department's attorney. The attorney's review and recommendations and language modifications have essentially come to a point where he has sent a memo to me that he is in support. He believes that this is in the interest, best interest of the community and that he could support it. So Matt, you're welcome to share any additional information you have, but I believe we, we talked about this quite at length, but you might want to recall.
In a nutshell, this brings them underneath the coverage of the, the city. When they respond as a rescue squad, just as a rescue squad, this would have them be covered under our insurance and give them some protection or further protection.
Yep. Everything Gerald just said, and just another key reminder is, our Firefighters Association is a nonprofit group and we are fully intending to continue raising funds to support the monetary needs of the so-called rescue.
to support the monetary needs of the so-called rescue squad portion. So we're going to continue funding the rescues, rescue portion, but we still obviously need fire protection under the city budget and so on. Okay?
Second. Got a motion by Colisters, second by Lyon to approve ordinance amending Chapter 5 Fire Protection of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Macocota, Iowa. Any other discussion? Go ahead and take a roll.
Keane.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Coolman.
Yes.
Barker.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, man. Item F, discussion and possible motion approving bid in the amount of $16,550 plus $300 per hour for cleaning of the Pittsburgh tank and tower. Jeff, you want to elaborate, or any questions, or?
This is for cleaning both of our water towers and the reservoir. Pretty much have all the information on the, in the packet there if you have any questions.
These are budgeted items, correct?
These are budgeted items. I've been, I started a CIP a few years ago for the reservoir, because there wasn't one. And, and we have money in the, for both towers to clean them, and I'll just say it again, next year, we're going to be getting one painted. Outside. So I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion by, who's that?
Lyon.
Lyon, second by Keane to approve, motion approving bid in the amount of $16,550 plus $300 per hour for the cleaning of the Pittsburgh tank and tower. Any other discussion?
If you want to go up there, I'm sure they.
Go ahead and take a roll.
Baker.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Coolman.
Yes.
Barker.
Yes.
Keane.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Gerald, you have anything?
Nothing reported, Mayor.
Anybody from the council have anything?
I've got a couple things, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
First thing, rental inspections. Noticeance should have come out for the third and final round of the rental inspection. If you get a chance, call Sarah up at ECIA. I called her today. She's kind of looking towards November, December-ish. So for all landlords out there, if you could get back to her at a timely manner, that'd be great. Another note, I had a watershed, watershed executive board meeting last week in Monticello, and it looks like the watershed is starting to gain ground, starting to make some progress. Depending on how the election goes here in November with the governor and whatnot, but they're talking about issuing some money. They don't have an actual amount yet, but moving forward, they will be looking for projects to take on that go underneath the watershed. So Frank, if you have any watershed issues in the city that you want us to take a look at, let me know, and I can take it to them, and we can see if we can handle it for you.
I'll pay the stakes.
What's that?
I'll pay the stakes.
Well, I can take a look at it, definitely. So other than that, that's all I got.
Anybody else have anything for the good of the meeting?
Happy birthday, Kevin Coolman. Forty years old tomorrow.
Oh, thanks, Erica.
What are you saying? All right, with that, I would take a motion to adjourn. Second. Colister and Coolman, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a wonderful evening.